Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, March 7, 2019. The time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Self.
Here.
Trustee Sette.
Here.
Trustee Longston.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present, Village Clerk Haley.
And, Mr. President, if I could, my understanding is trustee Longston is prevented from being here because he is way on business. He's participating electronically. Trustee Longston, you are there correct?
Correct.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I can hear. It's a little muffled, but I can now listen in. Thank you.
Everyone try to keep your voices up so we can hear.
Thank you very much. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who is here with us tonight and those of you watching at home. I apologize for my casual attire tonight. I had arm surgery yesterday, so my left arm isn't really up to dress shirts and suit coats quite yet, so I got to dress like I normally dress tonight. First up is public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, you're welcome to do so at this time, or you can wait for a particular agenda item if you decide to do that. If you do, talk to the board. I'd ask that you come up to the podium and state your name and speak into the microphone so that everyone at home can hear and see what you have to say. Would anyone like to address the board at this point? Please.
My name is Lisa Janunis and I live at 67 Groveland Avenue. I'm here to speak on the debate over whether or not the Village of Riverside should impose term limits on its Board of Trustees. I've talked with many friends and neighbors on the matter, and most agree that the wealth of knowledge and experience that a seasoned board member brings to local government is an asset. This experience does not come after one term, or maybe even two. It takes time for a trustee to learn the ropes and find their voice to be an active and contributing member of the board. We wouldn't want that newly confident voice to be stifled due to an arbitrary time limit decided by previous board members. Many people told me that they feel that voting serves as a check on board members, overstaying their usefulness. Others said that a good practice is to assess individual members on a regular basis to gauge their continued interest in governing and their effectiveness. These are both good alternatives to imposing a term limit. One argument in favor of term limits put forth by a current trustee is that by limiting a member's time on the board, more people will get involved in local politics, which will in effect revitalize the town. But I feel that if the board is looking for ways to get more people involved, it should work on cultivating candidates through civic engagement, town hall meetings in the community, and succession planning. The truth is Riverside rarely has contested board elections, and many trustees serve only one term. We've had only one board president that has served more than two terms in recent memory. While other towns have entrenched parties overstaying their welcome, we don't have that problem here in Riverside. We don't have an overabundance of residents rushing to sign up for a voluntary unpaid position in local government. Those residents that care enough and do choose to serve, we should thank them, not force them out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else at this point? We'll move on then to reports of village officers. Oh, would you like to do?
Hi, Lindsay Morrison, 421 Repton Road. I wanted to take a chance to invite everyone here and people watching at home to let you know that there is a candidate forum next Wednesday, the 13th, in the evening. This is the candidates who are running for Riverside Brookfield School Board. They'll be upstairs here on the second floor. Everyone's welcome to come and hear what they have to say. It'll be a format where everyone is asked the same questions, so you have a good chance of comparing them. So, love to see all of you there, and I have some flyers if you want to take them and share them with your neighbors.
What time is it on the 13th?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And that's just the high school?
Just the high school, because, yeah, because that's the one that's contested. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then to the reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report. I have the pleasure this evening to appoint Bridget Doherty to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy, a term to expire in 2020. You have had a chance to review her application. You see she's highly qualified for the position, so I would ask for a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Doherty.
So.
By Mr. Jisa.
Second.
By Mr. Ballerine. Conversation, discussion, praise. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sette.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Motion carries. And Ms. Doherty is here with us this evening, so if you'd like to step up to the podium. Madam Clerk, if you'll do the honors.
May I use your mic and repeat after me? I, Bridget Doherty, do solemnly swear.
I, Bridget Doherty, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Economic Development Commissioner.
Of the Office of Economic Development Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. That's all I have this evening. Ms. Francis?
I do not have a report this evening.
Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills, March 7, 2019. Approve the village board trustee regular meeting minutes, February 21, 2019. File and review the Preservation Commission meeting minutes of December 13, 2018. A motion to approve a hardscape permit application for the removal, relocation, and installation of plaques at Guthrie Park. And that's it. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
By Mr. Settevee.
Second.
By Ms. Peters. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sette.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock, sorry, trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is a resolution of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to BSNA for ERP and Community Development software purchase and implementation in the amount of $171,625. Director Johns.
Good evening. Staff interviewed from the, sorry, staff from the Building and Finance Departments interviewed several software companies before coming to the board to recommend BSNA for ERP and Community Development software in the amount of $171,625. Since the ERP system benefits the water and sewer system, a portion of that price is allocated to that fund. Staff focused on increasing efficiency by reducing duplication of tasks and customer service in choosing the software. Key enhancements in the ERP system include integrated online bill pay, enhanced online bill history for residents, paperless accounts payable, and increased reporting opportunities which will streamline the budget and financial forecast process. Key enhancements of the Community Development System include that inspectors will now be able to utilize tablets in the field that will sync to the software, increased tracking abilities, and online capabilities for permit applications, status updates, and payments. Are there any questions about the software that I can answer?
Any questions for Director Johns or Ms. Francis? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion, second, to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
By Mr. Pollock, second by.
Second.
Mr. Jisa. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sette.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters. Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, a resolution authorizing a $76,358 inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Capital Projects Fund to fund future capital expenditures. Director Johns.
This is the transfer that will draw down our balances at Irma to fund the capital fund portion of the ERP system.
Any questions about this? I'd ask for a motion, and a second, to approve the resolution.
So.
By Mr. Ballerine, second by.
I'll second.
Ms. Peters. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Settevee.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Director Johns. Next up are considerations. We have two items for consideration this evening. First is a discussion regarding pursuing code modifications and zoning text amendments relative to driveway aprons, driveway width, garage design standards, and incentives. We will recall that this has been an ongoing conversation, and at our meeting in January, I noted that we were going to ask our staff to go through and make recommendations as to items that they would like us to discuss, and this is their report this evening. Director App.
Yes, so, in reviewing the codes, our consultants' reports and some of the commissioners and trustees' feedback as we went through this ongoing discussion about garages and driveways, I've outlined some priorities that I feel should be addressed in the code relative to driveways and garages. These include conflicts in the zoning code and the Public Ways and Properties Chapter of our municipal code regarding driveway widths and setback requirements, conflicts with the driveway apron regulations in the municipal code are related to flares versus radii, clarifications on how front elevations are measured, a minimum driveway width, or sorry, a maximum driveway width for attached front-loaded garages, and addressing nonconformities related to existing attached garages. Staff would also suggest that the board consider adding a bonus or incentive for preferred choices for garages. As it relates to driveway aprons, currently there is some conflict between the municipal code and the zoning code related to the maximum width of driveways for attached, to attached front-loaded garages. The zoning code says that it can't exceed the width of the garage, however, the municipal code says that it shouldn't be wider than 16 feet. Staff believes this needs to be addressed. Specifically, staff would recommend that the regulations under the municipal code should just regulate the public driveway apron that leads to the driveways, and any regulations on a driveway on private property should be handled in the zoning code. So that separation would happen and be a little bit more clear. Also, there are some conflicts in there related to flares versus radii.
Director App, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
I just want to ask the trustees, how would you, because staff is asking for our feedback on their various recommendations as we go through this, would you rather us to take these as we go through, or would you rather Director App give us her full report and then we'll go back and go through everything, Siriata? Do you have a preference?
Hey, Ben, this is Scott.
Yes, go ahead.
I've got a quick question. I've had several people send me notes regarding this agenda item. How come we haven't set up this special commission or a special steering committee like we discussed back in December?
We had discussed.
Seems like we're way premature, because we were going to get together a group of people to start to go through this since we haven't submitted last time.
Well, we still have the option to do that. At our meeting in January, I suggested that it might streamline the procedure if we had our staff and along with our engineer attorneys and consultants take a look to try to really kind of weed out the really significant items. I mean, that is certainly something we can do if you want, if the board would like to take what staff has presented to us tonight and have another group look at that, we can certainly do that.
I think we have to do that. What we promised the village residents was that we would indefinitely table that issue that came up, because it had so many anomalies that were inaccurate, and let a group, a steering group, come together, work with the planning and zoning folks with some residents that are technically competent, as well as concerned citizens, and work through some possible code changes if they need it and if they had any reference to our landscape designation. I think that's what we promised, and I think that's what we owe the village.
I mean, I'm perfectly fine with that. If you'd like to make a motion to do that, we can see what the board thinks.
Well, we already did that. We did that in December. You know, December, it.
Mr. Ballerine, can you, so he can hear you?
I don't know which one to talk into.
Your microphone.
I can hear you, Joe. I can hear you, Joe.
Problem is, I forgot my glasses. But according to the minutes from our December meeting, it was asked if we wanted to consensus and move forward with the amendments to the existing code as respect to garages and driveways, and that motion failed. President Self stated that he and the trustee, trustee Longston, both feel that a working group comprised of representatives of the PNC and Preservation Commission, village board and staff should be created to form a group. That's as much as I can read, I'm sorry. Because I don't have my glasses on. So we've already made that decision, so we should follow through that. So if you want to take these recommendations, and we should have that group formulated, and they should read it, and then come back to us. I think it's premature for us to do that now. I think we should follow what we said as a board we were going to do.
That's fine. Is there a consensus on that?
I would agree with that.
How about this side? You okay with that? Mr. Pollock?
I'm okay with it. I was wondering the same thing that trustee Longston and Ballerine were wondering about what happened to the committee, but as President Self reminded us tonight, he did bring this up in January and suggested that we have the staff review before we go to a committee. And at the time, no one objected to that. I certainly didn't, but if now the board feels like we should go ahead with that original idea, I'm fine with that.
So I would, in order to further that, I would just ask any of the trustees or anybody watching at home, if you have suggestions for folks who might have the relevant expertise to be on such a steering committee, if you could get that information to Manager Francis, we'll take a look at it, and I'll come back to the board with a recommendation as to a committee to take a look at this. Is that okay? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you for staff, because you did a lot of work on this, and I think this is going to refine the process considerably and help things along.
Do we want to put a timeframe? I'm forming this commission, though.
I'm just concerned about finding people who will serve on it, who have the relevant expertise. I mean, keep in mind that the recommendations you have in front of you tonight were formulated by our staff, which is a professional staff, by our village engineer, by a consulting architect, and our village attorney. So that's some pretty significant expertise and firepower right there. So I look forward to hearing what other expertise people think we need to look at this in more depth. So I, you know, you can put a time limit on it, but unless I get names and recommendations, I don't know how I'm going to. As I said here, I can't think of anybody that I would appoint, other than the people that have already looked at it. So if other trustees have another idea, that's great.
There's plenty of people in town. I will give you a list of 30 people. We've talked to several already, Ben.
Okay, I look forward to that.
Charlie Pipple is the perfect guy. He's on the preservation, and he understands planning and diagrams that work.
Trustee Longston.
Any of the architectural folks in town.
Trustee Longston, can you estimate a timeframe that you think is appropriate? This has been going on for, since 2017. So I would, you know, we would obviously love your input to get this moving forward, but having no time limit, I don't think is good for anyone.
I'll put together a list and give it to Ben right now. We've talked to several people that are on other commissions that are willing to do that.
So then I guess my question for staff and the rest of the board is, is this something we're punting to the next board, or do we want to handle this with this board, or reinvent the wheel for the next board? And I don't have a suggestion, but that impacts the timeframe.
So I'm having, I barely have a quorum for the next meeting and the first meeting of April. I have to confirm with a trustee to make sure that they're going to be here. So if we have anyone that's sick for either meeting, the meeting will be canceled, because then we won't have a quorum. So those are the challenges in late March, early April, which means we only have the meeting, the second meeting in April, or the first meeting in May, because the May 2nd will be officially, I found out from Attorney Mars, when the board will switch over.
Which one? What was the date?
May 2nd.
So that's when we switch, how about it was the second meeting? It's the first meeting in May?
Yeah.
So if we're going to do it as a group, we would have to have this discussion at the second meeting in April. We can certainly shoot for that. Scott, do you think the people that you've talked to could give us a response by then?
Certainly. I think that's very doable.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that.
A couple of questions. One, it's obvious, given the timing, that the final decision on any action to be taken is going to be taken by the new board, because we're not going to have recommendation from a new committee, I assume, in the next 30 days, 60 days.
Well, Mr. Longston just said he thought he could have it.
Well, that's forming a committee.
No, I think he said he thinks he can have the feedback. If I have your permission to just appoint people to the committee, because I'm not going to be here the next day.
Well, no, I mean, you would have to, unless the attorney feels that we can do it differently, the normal course would be for the village president to make recommendations for committee members, and that to be approved by the village board, and then the committee would start its work. Unless you feel like you can do it differently, that's the normal way of doing things.
I mean, all the absences is what's creating the problem here. I mean, what, if, Scott, if you can get me the names, I can work with you to compile a list, and then at the, at the second meeting in May, trustee Ballerine will be presiding at that meeting, and you can present, I mean, of March, I mean, second meeting of March. Trustee Ballerine can present the committee to the board, get it appointed, and then we'll get a report back, maybe at the first meeting in April, and then have the vote on the second meeting of April.
And just to be clear, this is just for providing guidance, not to what goes back to planning and zoning? So if there are items that need to be amended within the zoning code, planning and zoning to review it, they need to have their public hearing, so this.
It will eventually go to the next board.
Correct.
Right. Because it was supposed to go in front of a public hearing, and according to conversation with Lance Molina, stated that they did, I still can't read it, so. But Lance was, it was supposed to go back to a public hearing, and then I just, I.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll try to get the names. I'll get them to trustee Ballerine, and he can handle that at the next meeting, and then we'll get a report back as quickly as possible.
One more clarification, I think, just one more. So this committee is going to be residents who are currently on commissions and boards, or people outside of that, or both? And I guess my suggestion would be that it not include any trustees, as much as I would like to be involved in that, I feel like I'll get my shot at it when it comes back to us. I'd rather have kind of a third party looking at it, as opposed to trustees.
I can guarantee you, Doug, I want to be a part of that, because the last stuff that we put forward to the Riverside residents was garbage and inaccurate, and we don't want to make that same mistake and debacle again.
I didn't hear the first part of that. Can you say that again?
I said the last, the last verbiage that we put forward and the last diagrams we put forward to the village residents was inaccurate and garbage. So that's why we want to try and have some technical competence, get together in a working session, so that then when it can go back to the planning and zoning, we have something that's doable and workable and fair and reasonable. When diagrams are presented to planning and zoning that haven't been vetted technically, that's a huge problem.
So what kind of expertise are you, do you think that you, the people that you're going to suggest can provide? What is there, what kind of backgrounds?
This is, it can be architects, it could be Greg Randall, it can be Charlie Pipple, it can be Sanders. There's plenty of people in town that have really good advice, that can do this and can vet out things that will easily show to those that work in this profession every day in and day out, of things that just won't work. So we're not putting into code things that are going to create more problems than they saw.
Okay. So I will, I'll need those names within the next week, so I can vet them and then discuss it with trustee Ballerine, since she'll be chairing the next meeting.
I'll send them to you this morning.
Okay. Anything else in this? Okay, thank you. Next up is a continued discussion of term limits for elected officials. Ms. Francis?
So the board began this discussion on February 17, and then it continued to the 21st. Staff, myself, I asked for further guidance as to what was expected in the timeline for this to be brought back to the board. President Self, you had asked that no final vote on a referendum question take place until April 18. And then trustee Pollock had made a recommendation with regard to a question with regard to term limits. It is within your packet. We've included previous documentation and memorandums from Attorney Mars related to referendum questions, subject to term limits, and also historically what other communities have done. If you have, obviously you can open it up to discussion, but what you have before you, which does not require vote or action, we just need consensus on what the board would like to see with regard to a referendum question. Once we know if there's a majority of the board members that want a certain type of question, then Attorney Mars can finish, finalize, and we can bring it back to the board on April 18, if the board so chooses.
So for the sake of folks watching at home, this is the draft question that was suggested by trustee Pollock at the last meeting, so this will form the basis of our discussion this evening. So this would be proposition to limit the terms of office of the village president and board trustees of the Village of Riverside. Shall the terms of office for those persons elected to the offices of village president or village trustee in the Village of Riverside be limited such that no person so elected may serve more than three consecutive full four-year terms in the office of village president, and no more than three consecutive full four-year terms in the office of village trustee, excluding terms of office served or commenced prior to April 6, 2021? And that is the election date for 2021. So that is the discussion item before you proceed. Trustees?
Well, I will start. I've been looking through the proposed language, and I still, I'm still very hesitant about doing any term limits. I'm going to just be open and honest about that, for the reasons I've stated before. I am looking to try to find a compromise with this board. I feel like the residents want to see us listening to each other, and I think that what trustee Pollock has put forth is a potential compromise, at least a starting point for a potential compromise. I resonate with residents who have sent me emails and spoken, you know, in front of us about maintaining the knowledge base, the institutional knowledge, the experience that someone who has been on the board for two, at least two terms, has, and finding someone who's passionate about this village and wants to continue to serve after two terms, bless their heart. But I think we need to, I think we need to hold on to those people. I do understand diversity of thought being a driver, and so I think that this, what has been proposed is a good starting point. I would be, with, sorry, that's the three consecutive four-year terms for president and three consecutive four-year terms for village trustee. I would be amenable to making that, because I think this is prospective. So I would be amenable to making that retroactive, but I think that, because I think in the long run, that's just really affecting us and the next set of trustees that are coming in, that issue, prospective versus retrospective. But I think this is a good, a good place to. terms for village trustee. I would be amenable to making that, because I think this is retrospective. So I would be amenable to making that retroactive. But I, I think that, because I think in the long run, that's, that's just really affecting us and the next set of trustees that are coming in, that, that issue, prospective versus retrospective. But I think this is a good, a good place to air the concerns of, and, and, and provide credibility to the concerns about diversity of thought and yet still maintain the ability to retain talented, experienced individuals who want to be on this board.
Further comments? We have to reach a decision this evening, so.
Well, I'd like to hear from trustees Pollock. He put forth this. Are you amenable to it being retroactive rather than prospective?
I, well, I'm just getting ready, make some notes on what I wanted to say. You know, there's been the argument put forth that it's not up to us, it's up to the voters. And there's a grain of truth to that, but that's also very misleading to say that. Ultimately, we have to decide what's going to be on the ballot. The voters don't get to decide that, unfortunately. Has to be a yes or no question. If the consensus of this board and the next board is to indeed, if the consensus of this board and the next board is indeed to put a referendum on the ballot, it is our responsibility to decide what that referendum says. And if we're going to put it on the ballot, I want it in a way that does the least amount of damage to the village. Because as I've said before, I have yet to hear a good reason why we need turn, term limits in Riverside. But, you know, again, I get it that let's leave it up to the voters. If, if the majority of the board want it on the refer, want a referendum and they want to put it forward, then let's get the best language out there that's best for the village overall. And I do think that this language is best overall. I, for the sake of this board's consideration, I would agree to make it retroactive, 3-3 and retroactive. You know, let's be honest with ourselves, the next board's going to decide this, not us. I mean, they'll either decide it by taking no action on whatever we approve, or they'll decide it by taking action and modifying this. So that's just the truth of the matter. So in order to move this along and, 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 and for the sake of consensus, I would agree to the ordinance as it's presented with making it retroactive instead of prospective.
I have a question about that. If the next, if we were to vote on a referen, referendum language tonight and the next board did want to take this up, is it the same process to have it removed from the ballot? I mean, is it, is it 4-3? Do you have to have four votes to get that off the ballot? Okay. It's not that you have to have a super majority. Just wondering how that works.
I think though, to clarify, trustee Pollock, there wouldn't need to be action taken if the next board agreed with this board. There would only need to be action taken.
Right. And that's what I said. I said that they'll either decide by not taking action.
By not taking action.
Or by taking action. So that's an action that they will take.
Okay. I guess it's my turn. I believe in term limits. I have from the, from the beginning. I think three, four-year, that's a long time. 24 years is a long time. I do understand that institutional knowledge is good. I believe that. I think, I think, I, I think three consecutive for a trustee is, is, is to me not negotiable because you really need that, that latitude. I think for village president, I, I don't know if it's that important because usually that is, that's, that space is brought up from a trustee. But with all that being said, I'm at a disadvantage because I have three more meetings. And I'm sitting looking at two trustees that have two and a half years of more meetings. And I think out of respect for trustee Peters and trustee Pollock, I think it's only right that we, we side with the board, at least the people that are sitting on this board today, that will have to defend this tomorrow. This has been a hard decision for me, probably one of the hardest decisions I've made because I, I, I still think 24 is too long. But I, I do think it's the right thing for us to do as a board. I think it's the courteous thing for us to do as, as, as retiring board members because we're throwing it in their lap. So I would be supportive of the three, 3-3.
Now, I would like to add to that, that I think it's really important that we get their, their voice in this decision from the perspective of not only throwing this in their lap, but this is, this affects them as well. And I frankly want to hear what they have to say. It might, you know, maybe it would change my mind. I don't know. So I just, I, I feel like at this point, this is a good compromise for this board. This is what we're telling the next board that we have come to an agreement on, a majority agreement on.
So, so right now we have heard from three trustees who would be supportive of a three consecutive four-year terms for president, three consecutive four-year terms for trustee, but that it would be including terms of office served or commenced prior to April 6, 2021. Is that right, attorney Mars?
Correct.
So it would be retroactive. So I need to hear from the other three trustees.
I, I, I have to vote my conscience on this one and I've been consistent. I think all we're asking is to give the voters the opportunity to codify what has been in practice for 90 years, 140 years, however many years this has happened, with one exception. So I don't think that that's a hardship. I think that the village has, from a local government perspective, has actually thrived relative to our peers as a result. And I, I, I would, I still support two terms for both village trustee and president, retroactive.
Mr. Lumson, Mr. Jisa.
Well, first of all, Joe, I'm sticking around too.
You don't count.
So I'm the one that introduced this. So I'm the one that introduced this and I, and I, you know, I, I, originally I heard from a lot of people who were all, all in on it. And then recently, the past couple of days, I've heard from a handful of people who don't like it. I've listened to all the opinions and I respect everyone's opinion. And I hope I'm not denigrating anyone that's ever been a trustee, but I don't think that, being a trust, I, I, this is terrible that I'm saying this. I don't think that it's that difficult, what we're doing up here. I think it takes time. I think it takes energy. I think it takes commitment. You need to read things carefully. You need to listen to people carefully. You need to speak to people in the community regularly. I do think that folks want to get more involved and I think that giving other people an opportunity to do this is important. So I'm, and frankly, for me personally, you know, I was nominated by a caucus that's no longer in existence, but I accepted the nomination to run with their support, understanding that there was a two-term limit. And I'm going to stand by that and I'm going to, I respect what, what Liz and Doug and Joe say, but I, I'm going to stand by and I'm going to recommend what I originally said, which is two consecutive terms for both village trustees and village president.
Please ensure that the microphone speaker.
Oh, hey, Scott.
Scott's here now.
And one thing I, I have to ask, Michael, do you know this? Does Brookfield have this term limits in their ordinances?
Not.
Because someone told me that. People have come up to me left and right, right?
Okay.
So someone told me they had since 1978. It's been, it's been in existence in Brookfield, which is our most, you know, closest and one of our nearest.
Yeah. So maybe because it's older is why I didn't run across it. We were going through, you know, the, the county clerk websites and, and using different resources. So something, I think the oldest one I found was like the late 90s.
I have it. It's 78. I don't know if it's still in, in existence, but it is. And I, I just found that interesting. That it's exactly written as, as, as I had originally suggested. I do want to say that I respect what everyone said. I respect what you said. The ability to disagree with folks is what's going to make our town better. And one of the reasons I wanted to go to the referendum was to give people a chance to vote on it. I really believe that switching this board up regularly is important. It's been happening for a long time. And I, I'm going to stick with my position and, and go to and to.
Welcome, in person.
Thanks. Thanks for everybody's patience. Little travel debacle today. Sorry about that. And Jessica, thanks for getting this hooked up at the last minute. I appreciate that. So I think my position.
Although, although, you're only allowed to speak now by telephone.
By telephone, okay. Just talk here. But again, I think on the term limits thing, the folks that have reached out to me, I think I'll share from that perspective, since I'm a lame duck, I think it's more important that I represent the people that have reached out to me in regards to this. And I think we need to look at why people are asking some of us to bring this up. And I think that has to do a lot with, with whatever perception or reality, a loss of confidence in transparency. And I think that's really the folks, the folks that have reached out to me in regards to this topic, both for and against, kind of fall into three camps. One camp that just wants to keep it status quo. They said it's been working just fine. The caucus was in place. The caucus is not in place. Doesn't really matter. Let's just keep it going. It's never been a problem. So why are we bringing it up? The other group of people are people I think that are very frustrated with us as a board and that think that other people should have the opportunity to be in there and so that there should be term limits in place to help incentivize more village residents to step up and run. Both are very, very good positions. And again, I think it's our responsibility to come up, like you were saying earlier, come up, make a decision and say, this group at this point in time feels this is where we should go with this. Two years, two, two four-year, or yeah, two four-year consecutive terms or two or three, and I don't care about the numbers personally, but I think, I think we need to really look at what's the root cause of a certain group of people asking for this. It's not like the ones up here are sitting here wanting to do this. I had no intentions to talk about this before my term ended, but they're asking us to. So we need to respond to that and listen to them. And I think the fairest way to do it is with, with a referendum.
So I guess it's up to me then. So I guess I just have a, I guess I just hear from different people. I haven't, I haven't heard any resident come before this board and ask for term limits. I haven't had a single resident talk to me in favor of term limits. In fact, quite the contrary. We did receive one, I thought, very thoughtful letter. We've received a number of letters in the last several days, not a single one of which supported term limits. And one especially thoughtful letter, I thought, said that, that he was troubled that we were kind of blending the lines or blurring the lines between a, you know, a, a decision that the caucus might have had in the past, which is a completely independent citizen-run group that has nothing to do with our village government. It would be much akin to saying, you know, the Frederick Long Odenstet Society has an opinion about term limits. Well, they're all entitled to opinions about term limits, but none of them have a right or have the power to actually impose term limits. So I just disagree with this, this repeated comment that somehow the caucus required term limits because they just simply didn't. And we've been through that ad nauseam and we know that they were more than willing to discuss three terms. So with that in mind, I mean, I don't like the idea of term limits. I don't, I think it's, I think it's not a good thing for our village, but given the choices that we have sitting up here, I think that the compromise that's been proposed is, is the best way forward. So I would, I would, I would support moving forward with three consecutive four-year terms for each office, including terms of office served or commenced prior to April 6, 2021.
Do we need a motion to direct?
Mr. Mars said, since it's a consideration item, all we need is a consensus. So that, that will be the, that will be the language presented to this board at the second meeting in, in April for action. Any further comments before we move on? Okay. Thank you all.
Let me ask you a question. There is, it, it's still in draft form until it's approved, correct? So if there were changes recommended or between now and the actual vote, that's still.
Yes.
Even on that night, if you guys were to reach a, a different consensus that you could amend it on? Because that was my question. You know, for those at home that don't have this in front of us, it's not just the ballot question, but it's actually the resolution. And that was important to get that draft, I think, included as well.
There were also a few residents that submitted some legal questions. I don't know if we want to answer them now, or maybe we could relay those to, I mean, I don't know if we want to, how we want to handle those.
I think the more information we can provide folks about this topic, the better.
Sure. I, I know trustee Peters had forwarded one on, kind of a detailed series of comments and questions, which I looked at and, you know, some of it concerned the, the constitutional language and whether this constituted a change in the form of government. I believe, you know, arguably it does. I think the conservative view would be to say, yes, this is a change in the form of government based on the way the cases describe that. And talking about federal, it, it, term limits for Congress were struck down. But here in Illinois, our Illinois Supreme Court and, and other Illinois courts upheld the imposition of term limits based on our Illinois Constitution and 1970 language. And in fact, in the most recent case from 2016, our Illinois Supreme Court expressly held that altering the eligibility requirements for candidates through a term limit referendum was precisely the type of change authorized for both home rule units and non-home rule units of government in our constitution. So, you know, I don't think there's any question at this point that it is something that can be done. And that was a retroactive case. So retroactive, prospective, they're both okay. And then there was a question about the timing, which is something that we discussed last time. And, and again, I had advised that we should wait till we're within the year, which is why we're waiting till after the March 17th. So we are, to, to take a, a formal vote so that we're within that year because that's, that's the, the best view under the law as to when you should do it.
Thank you.
And if folks out there have opinions on this between now and that vote in April, I encourage you to please let us know. And if you're frustrated with how things are going up here, run for office. We welcome that. We welcome the turnover and we welcome new voices always up here. Anyone have any new business this evening? Hearing none. We, we do have need for an executive session this evening for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the village. So I ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene. No final action will be taken by Mr. Lumson.
Second.
By Mr. Ballerine. Please call the roll.
Trustee Lumson.
Aye.
Trustee Sadey.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Means adjourn. Thank you and good night.